Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. President Rudd, here.
Pro Tem Ford, here.
Councilmember Camperoni, here.
Councilmember Lamb, here.
Councilmember Mosher, here.
Councilmember Dan Delitis, here. You have a quorum. Thank you. Presentations, we have none, so item number five, call to the public. Each person wishing to address the village council shall be afforded an opportunity to do so. If you wish to comment, please stand or raise your hand to indicate you wish to speak. When recognized, give your name and address and direct your comments to the chair, and remember that comments are limited to four minutes. So is there anyone for a public comment on agenda items? Yes?
Good evening. Steve Sammett, 245 East Shad Bolt. A question to you, Madam President. Is a council member allowed to represent the council without permission in meeting with officials?
We don't dialogue back and forth during it, but I'd be happy to discuss with you afterwards.
Okay. I'm just wondering if that's what's taking place and that there is no consequences based on that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to chat later. Thank you. Any other one else? Mr. Stevens?
Harry Stevens, 311 North Shore. My comments tonight, in both comments sections, will be with regard to contracts and budget. We're all going through the time of paying taxes right now, and so money is an issue that goes on. So, just in the last day, I have done some reading and found out that from the revenue side of our tax bills, or of our budget for '25-'26, revenue from taxes is $1,513,672. On Department 171, which is the village manager, we are spending $158,949 for that position, which represents 10.5 percent of the revenue that's received by taxes for the village. Contract was made for the manager several years ago, and there are only two current council members who are involved in writing that contract, so the rest of you are new. I'm really suggesting it's time for you to review the contract and subsequent other contracts, too. The contract for the manager calls for 40 days of vacation, of which he is on one right And 40 days for a relatively new employee. He has been with us for three years. Those of you who have worked for employers usually get one week after a year, and maybe two weeks after five, and maybe three weeks after 15 years. An exordent amount of vacation time has been given to our manager. He's also been given five days of disability, and he's also been given 14 days of holiday, which all employees are given, totaling 59 days, of which our manager doesn't have to be in the office, which represents 28.4 percent of the working hours he doesn't have to be here. So that's a significant missing. A four-day work week in which he works includes 208 days. A five-day work week in which many of the other employees in the village work is 260 So, the in-office hours in which our manager works turns out to be 149 days out of what's required of possibly over 200 days. So, the cost per working day, according to my calculations, is $1,066 per working day for our village manager. I think it's time for us to revisit the contracts and get some things changed. In the next set of comments, I will be talking about the difference between five-day workdays and four-day workways, 10 hours and eight hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a call to the public?
I live right over here on West Elizabeth Street. Everybody knows who I am. I've been going to court lately because our police department is clearly not trained properly. If they can't tell the difference between my cigar holder that I walk around the village with the chief of police holding, and a marijuana vape pen, which this one is empty, by the way, I think it's time that Officer Meyer get trained properly. I don't understand how these two officers are still on our department. I had an issue with Todd Stanfield, and I have another one now with Chris Meyer, and I've got enough evidence to prove that these people committed perjury, filed false police reports against me, and have done other things that I have plenty of evidence to prove that says it's time that these gentlemen get replaced. I also would like to mention the fact that ever since the building company around here brought the property across the street from our house, nobody's been over there to cut that. My landlord's been kind enough to trim the grass down each side of the sidewalk, from Walgreens to the driveway of the property. I think it's time these things get addressed. I also find it awful odd that I've had not one, not two, not three, but four garbage cans stolen by the garbage man in the last two months. I've filed reports on this every time this has happened. Every time I seem to put out a garbage can that doesn't look like their garbage can, they throw it in the dumpster, right in the back of the truck, and drive off with it. This has to stop. I'm going to be giving them a call to straighten this out. As for the water running under the parking lot of the Lakeside apartment complex over here, I'm a little disappointed. I haven't heard from when this is going to take place on the inspection, so I can be there. Nobody has since told me that they've tried to test anything. I've walked over there with the chief, I've walked over there with the village manager, I've walked over there with my lawyer, I've walked over there with Wes. I've been told that we're going to get a test done by the manager. Darwin's on vacation right now, so I expect when he gets back, I'll be hearing from him and taking care of these issues. My attorney took this little walk with me, and he had, he looked at me and he said, "Honey, how many years have you been telling these people about this?" And I said, "Well, at least five." He says, "They put you through all this over all of the things that you pointed out at that apartment complex, and they haven't responded to them?" And I said, "Yeah." He said, "What's wrong with this picture?" I said, "You're my lawyer, you tell me." He said, "Well, we're going to straighten this out." So, I think it's time that our village takes a good look at our council members.
Thank you, Mr. Kindred. Anyone else for a call to the public? Seeing none, I'll close call to the public. There will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Item number six, approval of the agenda by order of the president. No matters will be discussed after 9:30 PM unless the council votes to continue the meeting. Counsel?
Do you want to continue the meeting?
Yeah, approval of the agenda.
I moved to approve the agenda.
Do we have a motion?
Support.
And we have support by Mr. Ford? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are approved by one vote. Item A, approval of village council regular meeting minutes of August 25, 2025. Item B, approval of that village council special meeting minutes of September 2, 2025. Item C, receive and file of Parks and Recreation regular meeting minutes, July 22, 2025. Item D, receive and file of Planning Commission regular meeting minutes of August 4, 2025. Item E, approval of special event, Shop Small Saturday. Item F, approval of special event, Sing and Stroll. Item G, receive and file of invoice distribution report for September 9, 2025. Item H, receive and file financial statements, August 2025. Item I, receive and file investment report, July 2025. And item J, receive and file of Police Department activity report for August of 2025. Counsel?
I make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Do we have a motion? Do we have support?
Support.
We have a motion and support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10A, land division approval request, VLO 25-002, 658, 664, and 670 Victoria Island land. Mr. Sanchez?
Madam Chair. The property owner of three lots on Victoria Island is proposing to split the middle lot that does not have a single-family residential structure and combine one portion with the lot to the north and the remainder with the lot to the south. The existing lot to the south at 670 Victoria Island is currently legally non-conforming, and the proposed combination would result in this lot having a legal conforming lot width and lot areas. The existing lot to the north, 658 Victoria Island, conforms with the lot width requirements, but has a legally non-conforming smaller lot area. The combination would add land area to 658 Victoria Island and bring the lot into greater compliance with standards.
Thank you. Counsel? Mr. Lamb?
Yeah, I sat on the planning commission, reviewed this with Mario. I don't have any objection to it. However, the motion, the recommended motion, isn't correct. The planning commission recommended that the approval be contingent upon a review of the legal descriptions by our village engineer. I wanted to, I had to, we have a new planner, Representative Mario, and he was reviewing the legal descriptions himself. He's a quite competent person, but he's not state licensed to review legal descriptions, so I asked him not to do that in the future. And then, so I would, the situation is, the guy's had three lots that are not conforming, right? And now he's going to have one that is and one that's almost.
Yeah.
So, I strongly support that because that's what we're looking for. So, I'll make the motion to make the recommended motion to adopt Resolution 2025-032 approving the request submitted by Mr. Anthony Peenhold to divide property located at 664 Victoria Island into two parts and to consolidate the northern part with the lots at 658 Victoria Island, and the southern part with the lot 670 Victoria Island, subject to approval of the legal descriptions by the village engineer.
Second.
So, we have a motion, we have support. Other discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10B, appointment to village council position. Mr. Sanchez?
For your consideration, the village council is scheduled to consider an appointment to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of former council member Carl Sarowski. The appointed individual will serve the remainder of the unexpired term ending on November 8, 2026. Eligibility for village office is governed by the village charter as follows.
Thank you. So, how we're going to do this, I read Robert's rules regarding this, so I'm going to open it to the council for nominations. I'll ask for nominations for who you would like to appoint to the village council position. More than one council member, or potential council member can be nominated. Once everybody has made nominations, I'll close nominations, and then you are able to voice support for whatever nominee that you would like to voice support for. Afterwards, I'll open it up for a public comment as well, and then we will take a vote by naming the person of those nominated who we would like to fill that position. Does that make sense to everybody?
So, do you want comments that are part of the nomination or just the nomination first?
Let's just do the nominations first, and then we'll take comments. And whoever does the nomination has the right to speak first on that nomination. So, I will open nominations for filling the vacancy created by the resignation of former council member, Mr. Sarowski. Mr. Dan Delitis?
So, I would like to nominate Eric Papacek.
Thank you. Are there other nominations?
Yes, I would like to nominate Eric Papacek as well.
Are there other nominations? I will nominate Mr. Hughes. Any of the nominations by the council? Then I will close nominations. So, Mr. Dan Delitis, you are, you may take the floor.
Thank you. So, first off, I want to thank all three applicants for stepping forward and offering their time and energy to serve the community. I also want to recognize that we have three very qualified applicants, any of whom could fill the opening. When I considered who would be the best fit for our council, I considered two things. First, who could fill the void in the makeup of our council? And second, who do I think most closely aligns with helping work on the big issues of the village? When I look at the six of us here on council, most of us are either already retired or close to retirement. The demographics of the village have changed and will continue to change, and I believe the demographics of council should more closely reflect the changing demographics of the village. When I also look at what I feel are the bigger issues facing the village, we have major infrastructure needs that are driving our $26 million CIP, which in turn places a huge burden on our residents and taxpayers. Based on my conversations with all three applicants, as well as their responses to the questions during last week's interviews, I feel Eric Papacek is best positioned to meet the current needs of the village council. He has recognized our infrastructure as our most pressing issue and offered to bring a fresh approach to helping us work on this and our other issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mosher?
So, I agree with everything that George said. I am looking at somebody new. I'm looking at a candidate that has a fresh perspective. I wrote all this stuff down after the interviews. And that's huge for me because for so many years, we had people that were here, always here, always here, and for years, and we didn't have a fresh perspective, I think, until I came on. So, I liked his perspective of looking at the infrastructure because that was something I ran on, and I think it's really important. And I like that he's an Eagle Scout, but that's not, that's my, that's not my only thing. But I feel that the footprint, limited residence, what he said in the interviews, I really feel were very meaningful to what I look at and what I ran on when I became councilwoman. So, serving duty obligation, serving the community, those were all really, really good comments that he made.
Yeah, I would say I can happily serve with any of the applicants. Very appreciative of each of the applicants that came in. So, we had three, I don't think I stated that before, we had three applicants who were interviewed last week, and all of them, very strong candidates for the village council position, and would be honored to serve up here among any of them. One of the things I appreciated from Mr. Hughes is his diverse background, which he highlighted during the interview process, not only the engineering, we have a couple engineers up here, I joke about the engineers, but also the law enforcement background, which gives them some thick skin as well. And we know that serving up here isn't always the most fun and the most easy, and I appreciated just that experience that he would bring into it in terms of not being swayed easily by, you know, back and forth and being able to stand with conviction. Not that any of the other applicants couldn't, but being in that law enforcement background just gives this steadiness and that he wouldn't be pushed around, and also the thick skin of being up here and being in the public eye. Being in the public eye isn't always the most fun, and you know, what comes with the territory is taking critique, so I appreciated that, the diverse background that he would, and experience that he would bring as well. And I would be happy to serve with him or any of the other applicants. Any other council comments that they would like to voice support of any of the nominated candidates?
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say, thank all three of you for applying. I think you're all qualified. And if should another opening occur, I think whoever doesn't make it should apply again because there's a good chance they will get it, so.
Mr. Ford?
I think that, a couple of things that I liked about Eric Papacek is, in answering some of his questions last week, and presenting himself, he said how much he enjoyed the activities downtown. We want people that sit up here to represent, we have to represent everybody, the lake side of things and the downtown side of things, and I think it's important that we have people up here that, you know, participate in all of that because you get a firsthand look at how things are running, what's going on. That's all I have.
Would you like to say anything, Mr. Camperoni? No pressure, but, before I open it up.
No, no, I'm good with what everybody else has said. Agree totally. This is a tough one. It's a tough decision to make, you know, but thank you to all of them. You might have my job next. Just kidding.
I'll open it up to the public. Yes, Mr. Stevens?
I'd like to remind those who are not selected tonight that in a mere 14 months or so, there will be an election in which four of our seating council people will be out and up for reelection. So, I would encourage those qualified people, both the ones who search for this seat, but any other citizen who wants to be involved, that there will be an election following November, and please step forward, particularly those who have stepped forward this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Well, I would like to thank you all for the chance of being interviewed again. Congratulations, is the person who won, is he in the chamber tonight? Oh, anyway, congratulations to him, and I thank you for letting me reapply. I wasn't on my game for this interview, and I understand that, but I'm more inclined, traditionally, the interview wasn't done the way that we've done them in the past. And I've been on for managers, other council members, but I'll leave, that's all in the past now. So, like Mr. Stevens says, there's an election coming up in '26, and I know it's harder to get on council this way than it is to win an election, so maybe I will, maybe I won't. So, thank you all tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comments? Seeing none, I will close call to the public, and I will take a roll call vote. So, we have two candidates, Mr. Hughes and Mr., I'm going to double check, Papacek or Papacek?
Papacek.
Papacek, okay. I wanted to make sure I was saying it right. So, Mr. Hughes and Mr. Papacek. And this position is filling out the remainder of Mr. Sarowski's position, which goes until that next election in November of 2026, so it will finish out that term. So, roll call please. Pro Tem Ford?
What are we, roll?
You either, either Hughes or Papacek.
Okay.
Eric Papacek.
Councilmember Lamb?
Papacek.
Councilmember Mosher?
Papacek.
Councilmember Camperoni?
Papacek.
President Rudd?
Hughes.
Councilmember Dan Delitis?
Papacek.
Papacek wins. One, two, three, four, five to one. Thank you. And congratulations to Mr. Papacek. You will have the option to either, at the end of our meeting today, we can swear you in as a council member, if you would prefer to do that today, since I know you're here. Otherwise, you can go to the clerk's office to office tomorrow as well. So, whichever you would prefer, we are, we are open to either, we do not want to presume that you would be prepared to jump in midway through a meeting. So, you can let us know. I will ask you at the end of the meeting if you'd prefer to do that then or wait till tomorrow. So, thank you, and thank you to all of our candidates. We deeply, as was already said, we deeply appreciate each person who applied. Every candidate was a strong candidate. And starting next summer, if you are interested in running for one of the open council seats, you can file your paperwork, get your signatures, get your name on the ballot for the November election. So, yeah, thank you, and welcome almost officially to the council. Item number 10C, appointment to boards and commissions. Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. Carl Sarowski served on three boards and commissions that also need to be filled. The three boards are Orion Community Cable Communications Commission, to a remainder term expiring November 8, 2026, North Oakland Transportation Authority Board Directors for a term to expire November 8, 2026, and Pink Creek Trailways Commission for a term to expire November 8, 2026 as an alternate. President Rutt can choose to appoint the new council members to these, the new council member to these boards, or can appoint another member of council to these boards for the remainder of the term.
Thank you. Historically, often a new candidate has, a new council member has taken on these boards and commissions. However, Mr. Sarowski served on three of them, and that's a large number. It's kind of more than normal. So, I will first ask if any current council member would like to take one or more of those. And then, since our new council, almost new council member is here, I will ask if he is available and willing to take any of the others. So, would any current council member like to take on one of those? Mr. Camperoni?
I'll take on the Pink Creek Trailways Commission.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm already on the cable commission. What's the other one?
The North Oakland Transportation Authority, NODA. And NODA meets on the third Thursday of each month at 4:30.
Okay, I can do that.
And then the Orion Community Cable Communications Commission is the second Thursday of even months at 7:00 PM.
Well, we need another person on the cable.
Yes.
I should.
So, if I might, Mr. Papacek, would you be willing, you can come up to the microphone. A little unorthodox because, you know, you're not up here, but...
It's really easy and it's fun.
I want to, I don't want to appoint you to something if you're not available and not willing. We'll make somebody else up here do it. So...
Right, gotcha.
So, the two current openings are the Orion Community Cable Communications Commission on the second Thursday of even months at 7:00 PM, and then the North Oakland Transportation Authority, which is the third Thursday of the month at 4:30.
Right. Cable would be easier for my schedule, the later time slot?
Yeah.
And it's fun.
All right.
I like the people. You'll like it.
Thanks.
All right. Do we have any current council member who has the availability and willingness to serve on the NODA board? And that meeting rotates between the village offices, Orion Township, NODA Business, Oxford, Oxford Township, Addison Township.
When is that again?
That is the third Thursday of each month at 4:30.
So, that says we need one representative, but there's two.
Who's the other?
It was Mr. Sarowski.
He was the only one?
It says...
No, not for NODA.
Okay. So, that might just be a typo. Because right now Ms. Mosher is on there, but we only have one representative.
My mistake.
That may have been copied from the cable commission, is my...
So, I can do that.
The NODA?
Yeah. I can do NODA, but we need somebody else. I guess I didn't realize that we had two.
I think our clerk is confirming.
NODA. Is NODA responsible for the trial?
No, that is the Oxford and the Orion DDAs.
No, NODA's the transportation.
I thought it was just Mr. Sarowski on there. Because you've never gone to a meeting, have you?
No.
I wonder if maybe it was an alternate too, like a primary and an alternate, and maybe Ms. Mosher was an alternate because Mr. Sarowski went to it.
Maybe, but news to me.
Because I do see the alternate in a lot of the positions, so I imagine Ms. Mosher is the alternate.
Nope.
So, yeah, if you're willing to do that.
But I am willing to do that.
Okay. Then I will make the motion to appoint Eric Papacek as the village council representative to the Orion Community Cable Communications Commission, to a remainder term expiring November 8, 2026, to appoint Nancy Mosher as the village council representative to the North Oakland Transportation Authority Board of Directors for a term to expire November 8, 2026, and to appoint Mr. Camperoni as the village council alternate to the Pink Creek Trailways Commission for a term to expire November 8, 2026.
So, we have...
Is there support on the motion?
Support.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
So, we have Eric, we have a meeting in a couple weeks with the cable commission. And I'll make sure that Barbara gets you on her email. It only meets four times a year, so it's easy peasy. And they're fun. They're nice. They don't argue.
Any other council comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10D, appointments to Cityhood Committee. Mr. Sanchez.
Madam President, attached are the redacted applications received by the village clerk for the Cityhood Ad-Hoc Committee. A total of four applicants were submitted.
Thank you. And I will note, a fifth application was submitted after the deadline, so that application is not being considered. So, we have four applications. We have an application from Mary Jo, I apologize if I pronounce the last name incorrectly, Donna Friou?
Denafrio.
Denafrio, thank you. We have an application from Jim Berry. We have an application from Stephen Sammett, and we have an application from Neil Garbasik, council.
Do you want to entertain a motion?
Sure.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jim Berry, Stephen Sammett, and Neil Garbasik to serve as the citizen members of the Cityhood Ad-Hoc Committee for the purpose of evaluating cityhood and providing recommendation to village council by February 1, 2026.
Aye, second. We have a motion, we have support. Comments, Mr. Dan Delitis?
So, we had the opportunity to review, review the applications. And so, there are three council members that are on the, on this committee, this subcommittee, as council representatives. We reviewed those, those applications, determined that we felt that those three were the, kind of the best fit for what we were looking for. So, that's, that's the reason for the recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb?
I had my doubts about Mr. Sammett because he complains a lot, but he comes to a lot of meetings and pays attention to a lot of stuff. So, I, I think that's important, that citizens who come to the meetings and things should come to the committees. And I wanted to encourage, even though we haven't voted yet, to encourage the fourth applicant to come to all the cityhood meetings. You can come and participate and speak. These are, this is not kind of, kind of committee that we do not want to hear from you. We actually encourage everybody who wants to say something to come to that committee meeting, so.
Other council comments?
I agree with Mr. Lamb. I didn't know that I would want you to be on the cityhood, but, but I'm happy to have you on that committee.
So, I haven't, I, I'm not one of the council members that's appointed to that committee, so I wasn't in discussion. My initial thought was, I really appreciate Mr. Berry's service on the planning commission, but because he's already serving somewhere, I was going to recommend Mary Jo, I'm gonna say to run again, Denafrio?
Denafrio.
Denafrio, it's close, yeah. As an appointment to that committee because of the diversity of opinions and other representation. So, but, there's a motion on the floor? Is there any public comment on this? Either one?
Matt Pfeifer, 497 Bellevue. Neil Gravesback, and I've always had difficulty with his last name. He's somebody I've actually worked with in the community. He's already active. So, I just wanted to say that's a really good choice, somebody I've encouraged to get involved and even consider running for the board in the future. So, and I liked your comment about diversity. I think that, and I think it was mentioned by one of the board members earlier in terms of, in selecting tonight's a village council member, people who, it's important to find people who are involved and who are willing to serve. But it's also important to get a wide range of opinions in these matters and different expertises. So, I think that was a wise comment from the council president. That's it.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Rosemary Ford, 225 North Broadway. I, it also crossed my path of thinking that diversity would help and that it would be nice to have a female input, seeing as there will be all males. Nothing against you guys, but sometimes it's nice to see that feminine side in the thought process. So, just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. Anybody else for call to the public? Seeing none, we have a motion, and the motion is to appoint Mr. Berry, Mr. Sammett, and Mr. Garbasik to the Cityhood Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. Item 10E, budget amendment, police vehicle equipment. Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm gonna turn this one over to Chief Amundson.
Thank you, members of the council. Background briefing on this is during the fiscal year 2425, we replaced, purchased a new police vehicle to replace our aging fleet. The vehicle was budgeted at $56,000 prior to my arrival. The final purchase price was $51,041, leaving us a surplus of $49,59 that was applied toward the initial equipment purchases. Outfitting a police vehicle for service typically costs approximately $24,000. This includes specialized equipment such as emergency lighting, radio systems, cages, firearm racks, mobile computers, mounts, antennas, routers, radar unit, in-car camera system, decals, and other required components. The police department utilized prior year-end funds to purchase many of these items. However, additional funding is necessary to fully equip the vehicle and prepare it for road service. The Oakland County Vehicle Operations Division has provided a quote, "not to exceed $7,919 for the purchase of the remaining equipment and installation of the remaining equipment." The scope of this purchase agreement includes installation of a new mobile computer, mount, antenna, and router, purchase and installation of necessary lights and control modules. And in order to save money, they will also coordinate the transfer of the radar units, in-car cameras, and radio systems from the decommissioned police vehicle. The final cost may be lower depending on the condition of the decommissioned unit and the extent of the installation work required. In addition, vehicle graphics and decals will be required at an estimated maximum cost of $2,000. The vendor will be selected for the total of $9,919. This is also, this expenditure also aligns with our 2526 Police Department Capital Improvement Plan that was approved, which anticipated $10,000 for vehicle equipment. As we all know, that's just a plan, and this is actually the funding which we, which I'm asking to pull from the fund balance.
Thank you. Counsel? I'll make the motion to approve budget amendment BA 2025-207-1016, the amount of $9,919 from the police fund balance to GL 207-301-997000, capital outlay for the purpose of equipping the new patrol vehicle for service.
Support.
I just want to thank the police chief for the diligence in making sure that all of our equipment is up to date and that we have a plan and that it was in the capital improvement plan and that it's moving forward. Mr. Lamb?
Do we have to pay extra for the shotgun, or is that, that come with the vehicle?
The shotgun and firearms are not included in this council actuary summary for our budget. That would be a separate request, which is not included in this.
No, I mean, so my question was, the weapons, like the weapons in the vehicle, they're, you already have the weapons, right?
Yeah, the weapons are not included.
They go from vehicle to vehicle. That's why it's my question.
Person to person.
So, we don't have any more stuff to equip later?
No, no, this will be the final request to get this vehicle in service.
Cool.
Thank you.
Mr. Dan Delitis?
So, I fully support this. And again, I appreciate the, you know, taking a look at what we can reuse and saving money there. I appreciate that. And again, I appreciate the level of detail and commitment that you bring to the, to the department. Thank you.
Other council comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and support. Roll call, please. Pro Tem Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Liam?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosher?
Yes.
Councilmember Camperoni?
Yes.
President Rutt?
Yes.
Councilmember Dan Delitis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item number 11, call to the public, similar to the beginning. If you would like to speak, just come forward, and limited to four minutes. Mr. Stevens. And this is on any item.
As I mentioned earlier, my comments tonight are basically about contracts and things of that nature. I would suggest that all of the contracts that we have with employees maybe want to be modified. I'm taking the case of the village manager who is entitled, according to contract, to 40 days vacation. And at 10 hours per working day, which he has, that's 400 hours of vacation that he gets. Vacation at 40 days at eight-hour days would amount to 320 hours. The difference is 80 hours. 80 hours in a conventional work week is two weeks vacation. My suggestion is, because of the lack of equity between 10-hour days and eight-hour days, that all contracts be reevaluated, reevaluated, and termed in the phrase of hours of vacation as opposed to days, because the days are not the same. Equity should be the same for all, and that is ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for call to the public?
Donald Kindred. I, I think it's time our village gets together and starts taking a real good look at what's been going on around here. I don't seem to have any issues with our new police chief. He seems to want to help our community, other than the fact that he doesn't want to investigate his own. I sit back, and I'd like to welcome our new council member. He's one who I think will look into our infrastructure. I think this is one of our number-one issues with our, with our village. I also think that when people start learning everything that's gone on around here, that's been covered up, hidden from the public, and just kind of pushed aside, people are starting, they're gonna start making changes that they know are the right changes. And I'm not talking about myself. I'm talking about the people that put you where you're at. You still don't seem to get it. You work for us, and it's time to start getting shown. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else for call to the public? I'll close call to the public. Would now be appropriate if I ask Mr. Papacek if he would like to be sworn in now? Is that appropriate? Would you prefer now, or would you prefer to come in tomorrow?
Let's do it now.
All right. And then you can come sit up for council comments.
Okay, just go ahead and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the... States and the Constitution of the State, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of village council member in and for the village of Lake Orion, County of Oakland, and State of Michigan according to the best of your ability? Okay? You can go ahead and give me a signature right there.
Okay.
And then I'll have a copy of this tomorrow. I'm going to go over some things, or actually I'll go over some things, I'm going to print some things out for you, so I'll give you this as well for your record.
Great, thank you.
And then congratulations.
All right, thanks.
You can come take the end chair, and I'll, I'll start down at this side, so you can think if there, you have any comments you would like to make. So you, you get to start today, Mr. Lamb. So item number 12, council comments.
Thank you so much. I, I have a couple of comments tonight. The first one is, is a matter of, so in the, in the past five years, quite often I've made council comments and then had to suffer through rebuttals on the topic from other council members. And this got to be a practice which I think is inappropriate for council, so I'm going to inquire with the village attorney. She recently sent out, anyway, I talked to the clerk about some of these issues. So I, I think that if, if the council is going to debate during council comments over a comment that the councilman made, then it was inappropriate because it's not on the agenda. So if we're going to debate, it needs to be on the agenda, so if we, you know, are making council comments, we probably should not be debating each, what each other's statements are, we can make faces and whatnot, but I think that should be clarified, and it would probably make for a little smoother sailing in the future for other council people. So that's this kind of business. And then, so my next is, one of the citizens came up and, and had some questions or allegations about the behavior of council members, and what I would suggest him, when he comes up with these things, that he have a name and an action, because you're a public body, so we're more than happy to engage with, you know, any claims such as the name of the person and what they did, instead of a somebody did something kind of thing. Makes me curious. I would rather just have my curiosity satisfied right away with the name and action. Moving on, I'm going to, it's, it's, it's an interesting thing, I got a call from a citizen who is concerned, the village council now has a supermajority of lakefront board members. And I want to assure those people that just because we're, just because we're on the lake doesn't mean that we'll be biased towards any lake. I in particular have made a point of never having any bias because I'm on the lake or not on the lake. Second, there are some comments from Mr. Stevens about the, the hours of operation and vacations and whatnot, and I, I want to let him know that I agree with some and I disagree with others. The contracts will be reviewed again. Some of the council members, including myself, have, have thought that we should look at all the council contracts, I mean, not the council, all the contracts, and look for some uniformity in the contracts, and try to provide some kind of consistency of staffing at village hall. But we must know that, you know, certain members of our, of our staff were hired on four-day work weeks, and that was, you know, the condition of their employment. And I for one, until they leave, I'm not going to change, if I'm satisfied with their work, I'm not going to change that particular individual's workday schedule, but I am open to considering five-day schedules for new hires and new employees, and perhaps moving Other than, let's see, other than welcome, Mr. Papacek?
Yeah.
Papacek.
Papacek.
Papacek, not Papa.
Right.
Papacek, welcome to the council. We look forward to spending many hours working with you on the various issues.
Thank you. Mr. Camperoni?
No, I don't have anything to say today, other than welcome. It's going to be different. It's really going to be different for you, something you've never experienced before. Yeah, welcome. Hang tight, you know, but you'll get through it. You know, there's a lot of new, a lot of new things coming into this town, a lot of new, new, new stuff. I just want people to remember, you know, you can't build a building without a foundation, and the foundation, to me in this town, is the senior citizens, the citizens, what we put up, what we built, and what we've done, all that. And I don't want us to be forgotten, you know, because it's real easy for these, you know, $10 coffee drinkers and all that stuff to come in here and, and tell us how to live, and, you know, please just remember, you have to have a good foundation, and don't, you don't want to mess it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ford?
I'd like to also congratulate Mr. Pepcheck for your appointment to village council. I am looking forward to seeing what the Cityhood Committee comes up with, and another long discussion when it comes to that. And I continue to appreciate the DDA efforts with their scheduling of events, with the November events, the Shop Small, and the Sing and Stroll are coming up. We also have some October ones. I don't mean to jump the gun, but these were on our agenda tonight. So it's something for all of us to participate in and be a part of, because that's what village living is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dandalitas?
So I too want to welcome you, Eric. I'm sure you'll have as much fun as we all do. So I also wanted to thank all the folks who've come here tonight. We, we have a bigger crowd than normal, and I appreciate that. I appreciate folks getting involved and wanting to get involved live. That's great. Also, thanks to the three applicants for the council positions, as well as the four applicants for the cityhood. It's, it's refreshing to see people raise their hands and say, "I want to get involved." And, and please don't get discouraged if you didn't get selected. I'll make a plug again that there's an opening on our Planning Commission, same process to, to apply. It's a great way to get involved and a great way to get a good feel for what some of the issues are and, and what's happening. Thanks.
Ms. Mosher?
So I am really happy to have you here, and I, I appreciate that you applied. And I always thank the people that come, because we, we don't get a lot of people, but there are a lot of people today, so I'm really happy about that. And I do agree with Alex about having a good foundation. That's really what we're after. I think on the council, so many things over the years have changed, and I think we're in a really good place right now. And I also want to thank all the applicants that applied to be on the council and the cityhood, and it's a good thing, because we have had, over the years, we really have not had as much encouragement and people that have applied, and, and so this is a good thing. So I'm really happy about that. But thanks to all of you for coming. The more, the merrier, is what I always say. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Ms. Pepcheck?
All right. First, thank you for the appointment and for the warm welcome. Certainly looking forward to it, getting to work, getting to hear the community, serve the community, and do my best to make our great village even greater. So thanks for having me.
Thank you. Also wanted to say welcome again. Also, thank you to the village council members who took on another committee. I know that time is valuable, and you have said yes to serving in another way, so thank you for taking on those appointments. Also, school's back in session, if you hadn't noticed, big yellow buses driving around in the mornings and the afternoons. I would encourage you to just please be mindful of crosswalks, especially as the days get shorter. Watch out for those kids walking to school. And, yeah, we, we do have a lot of great events coming up this fall. Public comment time has ended, so...
Mr. Lamb made a comment directly to me. I would like to respond to it.
I'm sorry, following the, our order, we, I, I cannot. I have to follow the Roberts rules and the orders.
He made a comment directly to me and asked me to provide detail. I'm willing to do that.
I, I understand that, and that's something you'll have to do afterwards at this point. So with that, village manager comments. Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have much tonight, other than village manager will be back on Monday. On behalf of the administration, we'd like to welcome council member Papacek to the village council. And that's all I got tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no closed session items, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
We have a support, or a motion and support. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.